The broadcast of the regular meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission will now begin.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Welcome to the April 13th, 2020 City Planning Commission hearing. My name is Sam Rockwell, and I serve as President of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. And we'll call the meeting to order. The time is now 4:33. In lieu of recognizing the commissioners who are here with me, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll for attendance.
Caprini?
Here.
Dunick?
Here.
Asmiley?
Here.
Lipke Pierre?
Here.
Marwa?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Squeezy?
Here.
Rockwell?
Here.
All 10 commissioners are here.
Very good. Thank you very much. Our next order of business today is to approve the minutes from the March 9, 2020 City Planning Commission meeting. Can I have Commissioner offer a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Squeezy?
Mr. President, I move approval of the minutes.
Commissioner Asmiley?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Yes.
Dunick?
Aye.
Asmiley?
Aye.
Lipke Pierre?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Squeezy?
Aye.
That's five yeses and four noes. I mean, I'm sorry, that's, that's nine yeses and zero noes.
That would have been an astoundingly controversial.
Yeah.
Minutes. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, which I should mention just to anybody who's tuning in, our agenda is posted on the city of Minneapolis website at limbs.miniapolismn.gov under the Minneapolis City Planning Commission section of that site. Next item up on our agenda is labeled under consent, but it is actually a report back from the City Planning Commission Nominating Committee, Commissioner Squeezy.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. The nominating committee met online and received applications and nominations for three people to fill the three officer positions. That is President Rockwell for the president's spot, Commissioner Luke Keepier for the vice president's spot, and Commissioner Alyssa Olson for the position of secretary. And I would move those nominations as a, as a slate if it's appropriate.
That is appropriate. Do we have a second to that motion? Commissioner Marwa? Commissioner Marwa, if you unmute yourself, we've got to have a verbal confirmation of all the motions.
I second that motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, is there any discussion on this motion? Take that as no discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Asmiley?
Aye.
Lipke Pierre?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Squeezy?
Aye.
It's nine zero.
Very good. That motion carries. Next up, we will organize the agenda for this meeting. And I will walk through for the folks on the public telephone, the full agenda here, each agenda item that is open for public hearing, and walk through each agenda item. If you wish to speak on one of these items and have not previously registered yourself for that item, please speak up when I get to that item on the agenda. You speak up by hitting star six on your phone line. You'll become unmuted and you can let us know that you wish to speak on that item. Otherwise, the items will be placed on the consent agenda. Items, we have. Please move my phone. Please move to my phone.
All right. Can everybody hear me? On the telephone? All right, very good. Sorry, I'm switching, switching to, switching to a phone here, so my, my audio is better. So please, if you wish to testify on an item, unmute yourself by using star six and move, and let us know you wish to speak on that item. Otherwise, we'd be placing items on the consent agenda. So items five through 10 are not subject to the public hearing and will be placed on the consent agenda. Consent agenda. Next item up is item number 12. The H. Alden Smith House and Apartments at 1400 Yale Place, 45 Spruce Place, and 1403 Harmon Place in Ward 7. Is anybody here to speak on item number 12? There are none. I will place item number 12 on the consent agenda. Item number 13, the Rogers Market and Deli at 2007 Glenwood Avenue in Ward 5. Is anyone here to speak on item number 13? There are no one. We'll place item number 13 on the consent agenda. Item number 14, it's an adult daycare conversion at 3100 Lindell Avenue North in Ward 5. Is anybody on the line to speak to item number 14? There are no one. We'll place item number 14 on the consent agenda. Item number 15, the American Swedish Institute, 723 to 731 27th Street East in Ward 6. Parking lot approvals. Anybody here to speak on item number 15?
Hello, this is, I'm sorry, this is Bruce Karstapp, the CEO of the American Swedish Institute.
Yes.
I just simply want.
Yep. We will, for people wishing to speak on these items against the items, against the recommendation of staff, I should clarify there, speak up, and we will open this up for the consent agenda for people wishing to speak in favor of any of the items on the consent agenda if you wish to play something on the record.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to support it remaining on the consent agenda, so thank you for the clarification.
Very good. Thank you very much. So item number 15, there's no one wishing to speak contrary to staff recommendation on item number 15. Correct? I'll take that silence as confirmation and place item number 15 on the consent agenda. And again, we will place items on the consent agenda unless we hear people who wish to speak against staff recommendations. Item number 16, the Developmental Achievement Center at 116 East 32nd Street and 3128 3136 Stevens Avenue in Ward 8. Is anyone to speak against staff recommendation on item number 16? There are none. I'll place item number 16 on the consent agenda. Family Tree Clinic is item number 17 at 1925 Nicolet Avenue in Ward 6. Anybody on the line to speak against staff recommendation on item number 17? Take that silence as a no and place item number 17 on the consent agenda. Item number 18 is Visitation Monastery at 1619 and 1621 Fremont Avenue North in Ward 5. Anybody on the line to speak against staff recommendation on item number 18? I'll take the silence as a no and place item number 18 on consent. Item number 19, which is the North Loop Green Phase 3 at 405 and 408 4th Avenue North, 328 and 330 4th Street North in Ward 3, will be continued to the April 27th, 2020 City Planning Commission meeting. Did I hear somebody speaking up on the line there for a moment? Item number 19 will be continued, will not be heard today, to April 27. Item number 20 is 9/11 West 24th Street in Ward 10. Is anybody here to speak on this item? There are none. We'll place item number 20 on the consent agenda. Item number 21 is the Leaf South at 187 to 199 Irving Avenue North and 190 to 198 James Avenue North in Ward 5. Is anyone on the line to speak to item number 21? There are none. We'll place item number 21 on the consent agenda. Item number 22 is Paris Hill at 1930 Hennepin Avenue in Ward 7. Is anybody on the line to speak against staff recommendation on item number 22? There are none. I will place item number 22 on the consent agenda. Item number 23 is the Portland and Washington Mixed Use at 240 Portland Avenue and 500 to 530 3rd Street South in Ward 3. We will discuss item number 23. Item number 24 is the Kip North Star Academy at 5,050 60 Oliver Avenue North in Ward 4. Anybody here on the line to speak to item number 24? There are no one. I'll place item number 24 on the consent agenda. Item number 25 is the HCMC Edition at 716 7th Street South in Ward 7. Is anyone here to speak on item number 25? There are none. I'll place item number 25 on the consent agenda. Item number 26 is the Duffar Building at 1626 East Lake Street and 2940 17th Avenue South in Ward 9. We will discuss item number 26.
Hi, my name is Rob Cernic. I'm a neighbor and I'd like to speak about item number 26.
Very good. We will, we will place that on our discussion agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number 27, the OXOP signage at 1111 Washington Avenue South in Ward 3. Is anyone here to speak on item number 27? There are none. I'll place item number 27 on the consent agenda. Item number 28 is 3026th Avenue North in Ward 5. Is anyone here to speak on item number 28? There are none. We'll place item number 28 on consent. Item number 29, Roadrunner Records, 4534 Nicolet Avenue in Ward 8. Anybody to speak in opposition to staff recommendation on item number 29? There are none. We'll place item number 29 on the consent agenda. And item number 30, Towne Towers, 3404 and 3430 List Place, 3441 31st Street West, 3140 Abbott Avenue South and 3421 West Lake Street in Ward 13. Anybody on the line to speak in opposition to the land survey item number 30? All right, very good. Our agenda as amended is as follows. We will discuss items 23 and 26. We will continue item 19 to April, the April 27th, Minneapolis City Planning Commission hearing, and we'll place on consent items number 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, 24, 25, 27, 28, 29, and 30. Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Commissioner Asmiley?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
All right. Do I have a second, Commissioner Luke Keepier?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
I will be abstaining from item number 24.
Okay. And how do you move on the rest of the items?
Oh, aye. Thank you.
Dunick?
Aye.
Asmiley?
Aye.
Lipke Pierre?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Squeezy?
Aye.
All the items are nine zero except for 24 with Caprini abstaining is eight zero.
Very good. That motion passes. Next up, I will open the public hearing on the consent agenda. I'm not sure that anybody wanted to speak on that, but I will pause for a moment in case anyone wishes to speak on the consent agenda. Again, if you wish to speak, star six, there was one person who indicated a, maybe wished to speak, but I think just to keep an item on the consent agenda. All right, I will take that silence as no wish to speak on the consent agenda. I'll close the public hearing on the consent agenda. Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve the items consistent with staff recommendation on the consent agenda? Commissioner Asmiley?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second, Commissioner Olson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Just so I'm clear, the item number 24 is still abstained. So if I say yes to approving the consent agenda, it doesn't change the way that I voted for that item, correct?
Correct. It doesn't change it.
Okay. Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Asmiley?
Aye.
Lipke Pierre?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Squeezy?
Aye.
It's nine zero except for item number 24. It's eight zero with Caprini abstaining.
Very good. That motion passes. Next, Commissioners could have a motion to continue item number 19 to the April 27th City Planning Commission hearing. Commissioner Asmiley?
I move to continue item 19 to April 27th, meeting of the Planning Commission.
For a second, Commissioner Olson?
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to continue item number 19 to April 27. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Asmiley?
Aye.
Lipke Pierre?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Squeezy?
Aye.
It's nine zero.
Very good. That motion carries. Next up, we have our items for discussion. First up is item number 23, which is the Portland and Washington Mixed Use at 240 Portland Avenue, and staff is Mailing Smith. Mailing, the virtual floor is yours.
Thank you, President Rockwell, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mailing Smith, and I'm presenting on behalf of CPED. The, the project is called Portland and Washington, and the address is 530 South 3rd Street. The subject site, oh, sorry, slide, please. So the subject site is located along Washington Avenue South between Portland Avenue and 5th Avenue. Slide. As you can see in the photos, it currently contains a commercial parking lot and also fire station number one, which is currently in operation. Slide. The proposed development includes two buildings. It's, the first one is a 23-story tower with 238 dwelling units and also commercial space along the ground floor fronting Washington Avenue South. The other building is a seven-story residential building that has 90 affordable units, also a new fire station and a principal parking facility. The site would provide off-street parking for the tower and for the fire station, but not for the affordable units that are in the low-rise building. Slide, please. So staff is recommending a number of conditions of approval as part of the requested conditional use permits in site plan review, and most of which the applicant has agreed to. The applicant would like to discuss two conditions, number eight, number 10 of the site plan review. This is also, and it's also condition number two of the conditional use for, for a principal parking facility. So number 10 is the one I'll start with, and this one requires a thin fiber cement panel on the low-rise building to be, to be replaced with more durable material. And as an alternative, that relates to the alternative compliance requested for exceeding the number of materials allowed per elevation. Staff is recommending that this thin painted fiber cement material be replaced with something that's more durable, that would better fit into the context of downtown. And this is a material that is more commonly seen in low-density residential neighborhoods. The letter submitted by the neighborhood group also calls attention to the usage of this material, and they're recommending that a more durable material be used. Slide, please. Oh, sorry. And one more, please. Thanks. And here's an elevation that kind of shows you where the fiber cement would be placed on the base and also at the top of the low-rise building. Slide, please. So here's the site layout that shows you the three access points for vehicles. So one is fronting on Portland to the east, 3rd Street on the south, and 5th Avenue on the west. Staff is recommending that one of the curb cuts be eliminated and that, that it should be the 3rd Avenue South curb cut on the south. The TDMP, the Travel Demand Management Plan submitted by the applicant, shows both scenarios, one with two access points and one with three access points. And there's very little difference in the level of service between those two scenarios. There was maybe a one-second difference during the peak hour. So staff is recommending that that be eliminated to, you know, enhance the pedestrian and bicycle environment, and also it would enhance the quality of the building. And it would have an impact on traffic circulation. This is also confirmed by studies that have been done internally by property services and traffic. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much. Mailing, Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Asmiley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mailing, I just have a quick question about this item. I know this item was also on the, because of the fire station, it was on Clicks review last year for capital budget programs, and there was a comment on this item. And that was basically related to the combining of a fire station with the residential unit in, which in this case is the lower tower, tower, which has the affordable housings in it. So the, there was a, I have a question about the equity outcome in that and whether or not there are specific mitigation effort happening to minimize the noise and/or any negative impact from having a fire station right under residential units, which is, like, there isn't any similar one in the city, as I believe, right?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Asmiley. I wouldn't really be able to speak to the details of what's being done. I understand that there, it's possible that they might be constructed kind of as separate buildings altogether, and I think that would most likely be the case. I'd like to have the applicant answer that question directly about any mitigation strategies, because I'm not aware of them.
Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any other questions for staff at this time? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Mailing, and I'll ask the applicant to, I guess, ask our, our staff to help the applicant unmute and add speak.
There are three speakers registered to speak. The first one is Robert Loken. Robert Loken, if you press star six to unmute and state your name for the record and proceed with your comments.
All right. Good evening. This is Bob Loken with ESG Architects. Can I, am I being heard?
You are being heard. Thank you, Bob.
Yes.
Great. Okay, great. I guess, first of all, I'll just thank the commission for, for all being here and taking this process really seriously. I've never been happier to hear your voices, actually, so it's reassuring. So I think I'll speak first on.
Rare phrase for the commission.
I think I'll speak first on Commissioner Asmiley's question about noise mitigation between the housing and the fire station. I guess I will say that we haven't quite gotten to the level of detail where we would look at specific sound mitigating assemblies. But I will note that the fire station is separated from the housing by thick concrete construction and both floors and walls. And, and that the fact that it's affordable housing actually places a bit more scrutiny on the noise based on some of the funding mechanisms. There are, and I don't know these exact performance standards, but there are performance standards related to basically acoustic transmission from exterior environments to interior environments. So I can't answer the specific question, but know that, that it is on our, on our. So, um, I can't answer the specific question, but know that, that it is on our, um, on our development team's minds and that there are, um, agencies and standards that will, um, that will also come to bear in this. Is that, does that help to answer the question?
Yes. Thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Okay, great. Um, well, I guess I'll speak first, uh, I mean, I guess I'll say, uh, I'd like to, um, thank, um, Meiling for, um, a really nice staff report, and we're very grateful for the, for the overwhelmingly positive staff report. And there's just a couple of conditions that we would like to speak about. So I'll talk first about, um, the curb cut issue, which I believe is condition number eight of, um, site plan review, and also, uh, condition number two for the CUP for principal parking facility. They, they're kind of, um, have the same language. So, um, this has been, you know, probably the most discussed aspect of this development as we've, um, been going through committee of the whole and, and working with staff and public works and traffic. And we do recognize that the, the Third Street curb cut is a, um, somewhat of a convenience to the owner, but what, what, what we'd also like to present briefly, hopefully tonight, is that we think that there's public benefit, um, to having this curb cut as well. And I did upload a, um, an exhibit, a graphic exhibit. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay. So this first, basically, there's just two slides, and they show, um, our proposed condition with an entrance on Third Street, and, and then the alternate condition where that entrance is, um, removed. We can stay on this first slide for right now. So subsequent to the TDMP, um, our, our team, including our, um, um, traffic consultant, did, uh, an analysis of event night traffic, um, and the primarily the reason why our development team, um, is desiring the Third Street entrance is to handle, um, event traffic, basically overflow from, if, if there's an event at, um, um, at the stadium, and the, um, um, and the parking ramp, the municipal parking ramp adjacent to it is full. What happens right now, this is a, this site is currently a surface parking lot. What happens now is that the overflow traffic comes down Third Street looking for a place to park, and the overwhelming, um, majority of that traffic entering parking, um, in the fifteen minutes prior to an event and also in the, the peak hour prior to an event, um, enter through that Third Street entrance. And the data we used to study this was, um, taken from August twenty eighteen, um, during two events. One was a weekday concert, and the other was a Saturday afternoon preseason Vikings game. And basically what the, what the data shows is a distinct spike in traffic entering the parking lot from the Third Street entrance, um, just before the events. And the, and so maybe we could go to, so you can see right now, um, that yellow, um, arrow on the bottom is representing auto traffic that's entering from Third Street. You can also see that there's, um, uh, we're also pointing out the, the presence of the Gateway Transit Center, which is on Fifth Avenue between Third Street and Washington. And then also you can see the, uh, fire station here highlighted with the, um, nicely colored fire trucks. And so what, what we, what we perceive the public benefit to be is that, um, allowing, um, those peak loads of parkers to enter from Third Street, especially during an event, will limit the number of vehicles that then have to enter what is often a very congested block of Fifth Avenue between Third Street and Washington. And our concern is that if, if, if everyone who is coming from, um, uh, from the stadium wanting to park in this facility, then turns on Fifth Avenue, uh, and has to enter there, that it could, uh, result in vehicle queuing potentially in front of the fire station doors. And, um, the other benefit would be keeping additional automobile traffic off that block would also remove a potential, uh, conflict with the many buses that enter and exit the Gateway Transit Center. We haven't discussed the specificity of the Third Street entrance or the merits of that specifically with Metro Transit, but early in the development of this project, they were concerned enough about, um, the potential for increased traffic here to, um, to meet with our team and reach out with us, um, about their concerns about potential impacts to the, um, to the transit facility. So I, if we could go to the second slide. I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the, another slide. Maybe my, my screen, my broadcast is delayed. Are the Commissioners seeing a, there are second-
Yeah, currently, there's a, a thirty-second delay, so we're seeing one with a, with a red X across the entrance on Third.
Okay, I'm familiar enough with that exhibit to talk about it. So here you can basically see that, um, it's representing that traffic from Third Street, having to turn right from Third Street onto Fifth Avenue, um, and then enter the parking facility from Fifth Avenue, adding additional, um, cars particularly during that fifteen-minute and sixty-minute, um, peak, uh, vehicle load prior to events. So I think that's, so, so basically what we're doing is we're, um, you know, we're requesting that this condition of approval be omitted. And note that, um, um, this is the not, um, this, this hearing and, and this approval or denial of this, uh, feature of the project here in this forum does not, uh, preclude the fact that we still need to, um, work this project through PDR with Public Works and Traffic. So, uh, what we're simply asking is that this specific condition be removed from, um, from site plan review. And then, Meiling, let me know if you would like me to stop speaking about this condition and let, and let, um, the Commissioners discuss this, or if you would like me to move on to, um, discussing, discussing condition number ten.
I think we can keep going. Bob, I'll let you know if there are Commission questions, uh, that come up. I can see, I can see folks kind of raising their hand on the platform we're using. And so I will, uh, I'll let you know. Otherwise, we can hold questions to the end. So you can continue on to-
All right. So- Okay, great. Thank you. So condition number ten, uh, states that the elevations of the low-rise building shall be updated to replace the thin fiber cement panel with a more durable material. Basically, we're, what we'd like is for this, um, condition to also be, uh, removed primarily to allow us, um, flexibility in working with staff on this. It's, it's, it's really more the specificity of this, um, request for this item that we're worried might, um, sort of tie our hands as we're, as we're, as we're working to, to satisfy staff about the design of this building. I'll note that, um, the building does contain a lot of brick, and I know that in the Committee of the Whole meeting, uh, the Commissioners were, were largely, um, supportive of the exterior design and appreciative. Granted, we didn't talk specifically about, um, fiber cement. I don't know if that was obvious to the Commissioners, but I think that, regardless, there's a lot of brick on this material. It is a handsome building and a durable building, and we would, uh, we request that this, uh, condition be removed. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, yeah, Commissioner Lepke here.
Yeah, um, Bob, I had a question, and, uh, looking at the exterior elevations in question, can you talk a little bit about the ground condition of the plant? I, I know that in the, um, past, we've seen the use of fiber cement board on, um, upper story, usually setback portions of residential buildings, but, we haven't seen a lot of it at the ground level, and it looks in the rendering as though you have, um, almost like a water table and then, and then that, and then the brick. So can you just talk about what's the, what's the material where it meets the ground, and then how high is that? And then how high above that is the second material, which I assume is the fiber cement panel, but maybe you could speak on it.
Yeah. Yeah, got it. I mean, there were definitely, we will definitely not bring fiber cement to grade. Let me take a look at that, um, exhibit right now to familiarize myself with it. And I don't know if the, this might be a good time to, to change slides so that, so the Commissioners can see. That would also allow me time to get there as well, but, um, bear with me.
Um, yeah, if you look at sheet A fifteen, it shows a rendering, uh, that's a close-up detail of that, of that specific area. That might be helpful.
Got it. Okay. A fifteen. Got it. That's where I am. So, yeah, so, so basically that water table, that bottom two feet, it's possible that we haven't clearly defined what that material is. That would be masonry of some type, either brick or, or possibly stone. And the dark gray material above it is, is the fiber cement in question, and it is a combination. You can see that there's, um, some, some deep trim that, that borders it. So it's the, basically the field of that material that is the thin fiber cement, and the trim would be, um, a, a, a much thicker, uh, uh, fiber cement, sort of trimming that out into, uh, kind of a framed expression, and all of those materials will be painted, um, uh, in place as well.
And then, Bob, what would it be trimmed out with, for example, if it was the fiber cement panel in those recessed areas? Like, what kind of reveal are we looking at, and then what material is it?
Uh, the material would, would, would be fiber cement as well, but, um, but a, but a trim piece, which comes in, in thicker profiles. I'm not sure the exact dimension of it, but it could really be any, any dimension that we choose. What, what, what it appears to be in this rendering looks more like, you know, it might be an inch and a half or two inches of a, of a change in plane, perhaps more. So it would be, instead of being sort of boxed out with, with additional thin fiber cement, our intention is that that trim piece is our solid pieces that are, that are applied, um, adjacent to the, to the thin fiber cement. And then I'll also note that, uh, the, the condition appears to apply also to the thin fiber cement at the upper story of this building as well.
And then, Bob, just one more question then. Sorry, just, I, so is the same material then carried between the windows? I see where there's some of that same color material in the rendering. Is that also the same material or is that just-
Yep, that would be the same, same material, painted fiber cement, and, and that's a detail we, we use actually fairly often, um, in, particularly in that, in that application in, uh, um, between windows. It's, it's fairly common. We used that on the, uh, two oh five Park project. And we also did that, I think, I can't think of another project right now, but I know that we used that detail on two oh five Park.
And Meiling, does the condition apply to that as well, or just the upper and lower portions of the building?
Yes, it's a blanket condition, so there's no specificity between upper and lower or between windows or anything like that. So that's something you could specify if, that's, if you wanted to.
Thanks.
Commissioners, are there any further questions of the applicant? Um, I, I have one quick one. I, uh, the advantage of working at home is you have all your home office materials here. Um, the Transportation Action Plan, which is, is granted in draft form, but the City of Minneapolis's Transportation Action Plan, uh, is articulating a wish, uh, an intent for a bus-only lane, uh, on Fifth Avenue between Washington and Tenth Street. Um, and it strikes me that that would change the, the condition, at least for fire trucks entering and exiting the, uh, the fire station, in that they would be able to enter into and out of, uh, bus lane, regardless of how much game day traffic was there. Uh, have you taken that into account in thinking about this? Uh, or, or in how that kind of interfaces with this project?
No, that's, that TAP request is new information to me. I don't believe that came up in, in the PDR process. So that would be new information to me, and it would, I mean, I think it would certainly, might certainly assist the fire department in, um, in exiting, um, easily. But I also know that, you know, for instance, a hook and ladder truck, as it's exiting, I assume has a very wide swing and would probably need to use several lanes in order to, in order to exit. So, no, I, I can't, I can't speak specifically to that bus lane, because that's new information to me.
No, and it's, you know, it's not a final plan, so, uh,
Got it.
So we'll see, see if that ends up being in that final, final draft. Um, very good. Uh, Commissioners, any further questions of the applicant, otherwise I will open it up to, uh, the public. I'm not sure if there's anyone here to testify. I'll see any other questions coming from Commissioners. Uh, so thank you, uh, to the applicant, and, uh, is there, open the public hearing. Is there anyone, uh?
The next speaker in queue is Ross Stidely. Ross Stidely, press star six. And please state your name and address for the record.
Ross Stidely, are you on the line? We cannot hear you if you are. Star six unmutes you.
Hi, my name's, uh, Ross Stidely from Sherman Associates. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I, I apologize. I tried to, I signed up this morning and tried to withdraw my name as a speaker after, uh, coordinating with Bob Logan on his presentation. I don't have anything further to add.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to testify? I'm not sure if the clerk or anybody else is, is in line here. All right. I assume that we don't have anybody else, uh, who pre, uh, pre-signed up, uh, and it doesn't sound like anybody has happened into this. So with that, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I think, Mr. Chair, I think we might have one more. I just want to make sure that we check the queue before we close that hearing. Sorry.
All right. Why don't we check the queue?
Wes Beeler. Wes Beeler, press star six. And state your name for the record.
This is Wes Beeler, ESG Architects. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. I, I was just, uh, also kind of like Ross registered on deck. Uh, Bob did a good job covering the point, so thank you.
Very good. Uh, okay. Uh, is there anybody else in the queue?
No, Mr. Chair, the queue is clear.
The queue is clear, and nobody has, uh, unmuted themselves, so I will close the public hearing. Uh, Commissioners, we have, uh, a number of applications before us. Would anybody like to start us off with discussion or with a motion? Several conditional use permits and site plan review. Uh, Commissioner Lepke here.
I mean, I have a question for Meiling.
Go for it.
All right, uh, Meiling, uh, I'm just wondering, have, have, I can't recall in my memory, um, but maybe you know, have we, um, that you can recall ever approved of fiber cement panel on the ground floor application of a, of a mid-range density building before residential?
Um, I'm sure, I'm sure it's happened. Um, we don't have regulations that prohibit that necessarily. We regulate it through the maximum durability per elevation of thirty percent. And this, this, um, project does comply with those maximums. So, um, we're tying this more to the number of exterior materials that they have and trying to kind of rein, rein that in from an aesthetic and durability standpoint. I could also maybe turn it over to Ms. Helene, and maybe she would have, um, greater recollection of specific examples, um, if you'd like to chime in.
Um, I'm sure we have. I know we have plenty of examples where we've allowed it on, um, like a six-story building. Um, I can't- a six-story building. I can't give you an address off the top of my head, but. Thanks.
Very good. Are there any further questions? Somebody have an item for discussion, or somebody wish to make a motion? We have five conditions before us, three CUPs, site plan, and plat. Commissioner Lipkeep here.
Alrighty, I will move the conditional permit, excuse me, conditional use permits for A, B, and C.
A motion to approve conditional use permits A, B, and C. And I assume that is with the various stated conditions, suggested by staff.
Yes.
All right. We have motion and a second. Commissioner Sweetsie.
I second the motions to approve items A, B, and C with conditions.
We have motion and a second to approve items A, B, and C, the three conditional use permits with all stated conditions. Commissioners, is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Is Miley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
We have nine yeses and zero noes.
All right, that motion carries. Commissioner Meyer?
I move approval of staff recommendations for item D with the 12 conditions listed.
All right, we have a motion to approve site plan review with the 12 stated conditions. Do we have a second, commissioners? Commissioner Smiley?
I second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Is Miley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
That's nine zero.
That motion carries. Commissioners, we have one more item on this agenda. Item here, preliminary and final plat.
I'll move staff recommendation for item E, preliminary and final plat.
Commissioner Meyer moves recommendation, staff recommendation on item E for approval. Do we have a second? Commissioner Olson?
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second for approval of the preliminary and final plat. Any discussion? Very none, clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Is Miley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
That's nine zero.
Very good. That motion carries, and that concludes our business with item number 23. Before taking up our next discussion item, item number 26, staff has very helpfully reminded me that I noted that we do not have a public hearing on items number five through 10, our land sales. And then I promptly did not put them on the consent agenda. So could I have a motion to approve the consent items five through 10, the land sales? Commissioners, Smiley?
I move to approve the consent items for land sales, items five through 10 of the agenda.
Very good. And Commissioner Sweetsie?
Second.
There's motion and a second to approve the land sales, items five through 10 on the on the agenda. Any discussion? Here none, clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Is Miley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
That's nine zero.
I just said a whole bunch of stuff while my phone was on mute. I apologize. Next up is item 26, the Dakar Building at 1626 East Lake Street and 2940 17th Avenue South and Ward 9. Staff is Lindsay. Lindsay, floor is yours.
Good evening, commissioners. The site before you is 1626 East Lake Street and 2940 17th Avenue South. These parcels are located at the intersection of 17th Avenue South and Lake Street. They are separated by a public alley that the applicant has proposed to vacate as part of the proposal. The both sites are Zon C1, and the site has split guidance in 2040 with the 1626 East Lake Street parcel guided for corridor mixed use and corridor six, and then the 2940 parcel guided for interior three and urban neighborhood. The the proposed design, as you'll see, does kind of respect that split guidance with a building that steps down from five stories to three stories at the midpoint of the proposed vacated alley. So the building itself would contain 36 dwelling units and 4,755 square feet of commercial space, which is divided into five retail spaces, three of which front on Lake Street and two of which front on 17th. Next slide. The applications required include a conditional use permit to increase the maximum allowed height from three stories or 42 feet to five stories or 51.2 feet, variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 2.04 to 2.64, variance to reduce the minimum dwelling unit size for one-bedroom units from 500 square feet to 451 square feet, and site plan review and the alley vacation. Next slide. So here's just an aerial view of the site. The 1626 East Lake Street site is currently vacant, and the 2940 17th Avenue South site is occupied by a surface parking lot. Next slide. This is the site plan proposed. You'll see indicated here the partial alley vacation. So the applicant is proposing five parking spaces that would be accessed off of the remaining alley. The current alley is a T-shaped alley, and the applicant has proposed to vacate one full arm of the alley, though the the western portion of the vacation would be there would be a split access easement with the Salvation Army to allow for them to continue to use that, as well as the applicant's. Next slide. Here's a floor plan that shows the configuration of the first floor, including those five commercial spaces, a community room, and office for the residential buildings. The building is set back from the north property line to preserve the required setbacks there. Next slide. And then you can actually forward two slides. These are just the floor plans of the upper floors. Next slide. And the elevations are shown here and in the next slide. And then if you'll forward to the following slide, there are some renderings of the proposed building. So this building in particular, the conditional use permit for the increase in height and the variance for the increase in floor area ratio both have to do with the C1 zoning and the fact that C1 does not allow the density that is called for in the 2040 plan. Both the height and the FAR are likely consistent, even though we haven't we haven't formalized the floor area ratios that will be allowed in these districts in the future. The proposal does seem consistent with what we would likely expect. So both the conditional use permit and FAR variance are compatible with the 2040 guidance. In addition, the unit size variance, staff found that to be reasonable, given the narrow width of the parcel and the need to have a double loaded or the there to have a double loaded corridor on upper step or upper stories. And staff is also recommending approval of the site plan review and alley vacation, if you flip to the next slide. There are some conditions of approval, mostly that have to do with the site plan review and just ensuring that the the project does not have blank walls on the, I believe it's the north elevation, and that it provide canopy trees. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Smiley?
Hi, Mr. Chair, and Lindsay, thank you for your presentation. I do have a question about the alley vacation and kind of wondering, how is that alley currently used? And what are the, from the staff perspective, the potential implications of closing that alley altogether? And and I understand that it wouldn't necessarily change traffic too much, but I'm still kind of wondering what the use is currently.
So the if if I think I go to slide number four in that presentation, the alley is currently a T-shaped alley, so there's currently a connection from 16th through to 17th, and then that splits to go north along the residential alley. My understanding is that the northern portion of the alley is primarily used for residential uses. However, my understanding from the neighborhood is that there are a lot of concerns about traffic at the there's a grocery on 16th, and there are lots of issues with traffic cutting through Salvation Army parking lot and cutting through that alley to get around congestion on East Lake Street. So there was some hope that potentially closing off that arm of the alley would reduce would reduce traffic in the alley for folks who are using that as a shortcut.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions? Seeing no other questions of staff, I'll ask the applicant introduce themselves if they're on the line and fill in any other details if you wish.
Clay Dutra, plus star six to unmute.
Yes, I'm here. My name is Clay Dutra, and I'm representing the the owner as the applicant for this process. So I first I want to thank Lindsay very much for the great job she did. It was a long process. So we worked together solving all the issues that came up. Also thank the neighborhood, several meetings that we went through trying to accommodate the project, and thank the commissioners for for being here and discussing these items with us today. So this project, Commissioner Smiley asked what the alley is being used for today. I have the answer for it. The alley today is being used for drug dealing and prostitution and nothing else. Also, we have been finding lots of garbage on on that portion of the alley and on that portion of the land. And being a three-way alley, we have a problem that we have traffic going through, traffic that try to avoid the light, they close the red light on Lake Street and 17th. When the light is closed, traffic traveling 17th southbound will cut into the alley to the parking lot of Salvation Army, who also were having issues with that traffic coming through because they have kids a lot of times there. And we 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 had some study done, and we, myself, we stopped there in a couple of days and made videos of this happening. It really happens. Traffic coming from 17th goes into the alley, out to out to the Salvation Army, also goes into the alley and out into 16th. Even traffic coming from Lake Street when the sign is red, traveling west, will cut into Salvation Army, out into the alley, drive into 17th. Other than that, we are proposing a very nice building with 36 units, which one is going to be accessible, and all of the others is going to be type B convertible units. We are offering 10% of them affordable. And we our plan there is to clean up that corner and put cameras and security and lightning, and then make that corner beautiful again. So that's our proposition, is a nice building with a lot of amenity. We are using about 20% of this area of the building for community spaces with a community room. We have gym, we have decks, community decks. On top of, we have a backyard with table and recreational area. And also, we have a bike shop, we have a bike parking. And that is that is some of the things we we've done. We changed the project from the beginning. We have bigger commercial units. Through discussion with the neighborhood, trying to accommodate for for one of the issues that came out that was parking for the building, even we still supplying more parking spots than recommended by the code, we still were concerned about some of the concerns of the neighborhood, which was parking. So we changed that. Instead of doing bigger retail units, we we made them smaller, and we are shooting for for offices, like lawyer offices, accounting, chiropractic, and insurance agent, perhaps. So something that will not draw much of parking and neither loading or unloading necessary on the on the neighborhood. I think I think that's about what I have to start, and I am open to questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Dunn, here just a quick question. You said you were representing the owner. Who is the owner?
The owner is Gorgi Yang.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Marwa?
Yes, hi. A quick question. Has there been any opposition from the neighborhood about blocking off this alleyway as far as street access goes?
Yes, there have been few neighbors that were opposite to this. And that and I heard that I never met any of these neighbors in person, because we had five different meetings at the neighborhood association meetings, and none of those that are in opposition to showed up to. up to discuss the project, to ask questions and to see what we could offer. So we heard of, we heard through emails, and we heard through other neighbors, but I did not met any of the few, two or three, I'm not sure, who did not support the alley vacation.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. And I know that we have a couple other folks on the line. I'll let clerk and staff help us introduce those folks, if you can state your name and address for the record.
The next speaker in queue is Rob Zernick. Rob Zernick, press star six. State your name for the record and make your comment.
Rob Zernick, if you are talking, we cannot hear you. Star six will pull you off mute. All right, why don't we move on to our next speaker?
Hi. Hi, I'm on, sorry about that, Rob Zernick here.
Perfect.
Okay, Rob Zernick, 2931 16th Avenue South. I can actually speak about some of the issues around the alley instead of talking about some random visits over here. Yeah, I just, I don't want to revisit stuff around the opposition to this project, but it's not true that it was just two or three people that nobody had ever showed up to meetings. A lot of people had actually gone to meetings and spoken about some of these things, but I don't want to revisit any of that. And so I do appreciate Clay being here and talking about stuff, and yes, making some adjustments to, based on some of the issues and concerns from the residents. I know there were emails that had gone out, and there was a petition that had gone out, mostly around the affordability issues. My neighborhood is a very, very poor neighborhood, and we're talking, you know, some of these, the penthouse, I believe, being at close to a million dollars, something like that. So, you know, we were very concerned about the affordability and sort of the displacement issues around this project, but I'm here to speak about a couple of things that the planning commission can be helpful with. First, I'd like to speak about the trees and the landscaping, and I'd really like to encourage you to continue with asking for trees. We don't have a lot of tree cover over here. This neighborhood, if you look on some of the air pollution maps, is some of the dirtiest air in the city, and it also coincidentally has some of the least amount of tree cover. So anything we can do to create tree cover, especially this large building, is going to create a lot of urban heat mass, and so we already have a hot area that's going to be made even hotter by this building. So I'd really like you to think about making sure trees, shade trees are part of the landscape. I'd like to speak about this alley, though. We have a lot of concerns, and it's not just drug dealing and prostitution that happens in our alley. A lot of residents, we do use our alleys over here. One of the reasons, because 16th and 17th Avenue have a lot of, 16th Avenue has a lot of traffic congestion because of a grocery store on the corner over here, and a lot of customers of that grocery store use the north and south alley to get around 16th Avenue to cut down to 29th Street. And yes, a lot of people do use that alley to cut off of Lake Street and to cut east and west. Closing that alley off on one end is really just going to increase our livability. A lot of our neighbors, their kids play in the alleys because they can't play on 16th Avenue because of the traffic and because of the congestion. We'd ask you to explore possibly closing that southern end, making it a dead-end alley. It practically is a dead-end alley. It only runs between Lake Street and 29th before it hits the greenway. So for all intents and purposes, it doesn't cut through. It really only needs access for residents and for garbage collection, and that could be dealt with by closing off our southern end of the alley. That would discourage people from trying to cut through and attempt to create a shortcut over here. A couple other things, I'd like to think about some of the street designs, especially designing for crime reduction, really having eyes on the street. I know there's a lot of empty walls over here. Empty walls are just places where people kind of tuck away, and anytime you can have windows so that the people inside can kind of see what's happening outside, that could be a solution to some of the big empty wall spaces that we're talking about and looking at in this design. And we do have other neighbors and other residents that have shared these concerns. It's kind of an interesting meeting for this. I know other folks wouldn't have been able to make it to this meeting as it was, even it was in person, and there were some language issues and technology access issues for some other neighbors. So I'm glad to be able to speak here. I think one of my other neighbors might be on the line to maybe talk about this, too. Yeah, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
I will defer to staff for our next testifier. State your name and address for the record.
The final speaker is Joshua Nathan. Joshua Nathan, press star six to unmute, and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good afternoon. Joshua Nathan, 2932 17th Avenue South. Thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to speak with concern about the proposed development. I really only have two concerns, although that would really be in addition to the concerns that Rob Zernick just spoke of as well. I have two specific concerns. Maybe the first one might be easily addressed by the applicant, and the second one, I think, is really more of a troubling issue for me, and I know that many of my neighbors have spoken about this as well amongst ourselves. We'll start with the easy one. I looked pretty closely at the proposed building plans, and I do appreciate that the 2940 portion of the property, 2940 17th Avenue, which is just two short doors down from me, that it does have a shorter height to really fit the concept of the use plan for the area, and I appreciate that. However, I am a little bit concerned looking at that, in that it appears to offer a space for an additional deck or outdoor upper floor space atop that third floor to possibly be developed in the future. I'm wondering if, after my comments, it might be possible to receive some sort of assurance from the applicant that that is not in the works. We would really like to not have common outdoor space towering over our property. So that's my first concern, one that I think is probably easily addressed. My second concern is a little bit more difficult, and I think Rob touched on this a little bit as well, but I want to really drill down a little bit more specifically into this. Given the density and number of units in the building, and given that while some of these units are going to be affordable housing designated, and I appreciate that, enough of them will not be where, I really do have to wonder how many of these middle or upper income occupants of these units would realistically not have automobiles of their own? And should they bring their automobiles with them, I'm wondering where exactly they would park them. It doesn't appear that the plan submitted really takes resident parking in mind, and I certainly understand the concept of a transit corridor, but I would point out to those that are interested that this neighborhood actually has a very high density of renters versus owners. So we already on 16th and 17th and 18th Avenue don't really have a lot of street parking as it is. I'm looking out at an empty street right now because we have construction going on, but typically it's very full of people. I'm trying to imagine the impact of having as many as three dozen people and their family members looking for a place to park their cars at night. It's primarily for that reason that I speak in opposition to this project as currently planned, but those are my two concerns, so that's pretty much all I have to offer.
Thank you very much. This is the end of our speakers, correct?
Yes, there's no more speakers.
All right, there are no more speakers.
I'm sorry, may I just say one more thing? I'm really sorry, this is Rob Zernick again. I just wanted to say that...
We just allowed people one time to testify.
Okay, sorry about that, okay.
Very good, thank you very much. All right, so post-public hearing, if I could have the applicant address the testifier's question regarding the rooftop of the three-floor section, the applicant is still on the line.
Yes, I am here.
Star six to unmute yourself, very good.
Yes, it's great. So thank you, Rob, and then Josh, I appreciate your input, and I can assure that it isn't going to be a deck. Never we thought of being a deck, it is a roof there. I don't think it's even good for the project to have that as a deck, so we are not going to do a deck there. I can assure you that. Another thing I would like to talk about is that all of the units, the planned rental value is between 1,300 and 1,600, which itself seems very affordable. When Mr. Rob said something about a million-dollar penthouse, I don't, I cannot relate to that. We are not building a unit for sale. It's all going to be rental, and then they are going to be purely affordable already based on the market prices that we have been seeing for rental on units around Minneapolis. So they are going to be built for the community that do not have a car. We're going to shoot for people that do not have a car, that can live and want to live without a car in that neighborhood. We are offering, like I said before, a biking shop, biking parking, a bunch of biking parking, and then we're still offering fuel houses, even though the code does not require for them. We do have fuel for them. Of course, it won't be enough if everybody wants to have a car on the building, but we do not, will not encourage residents with cars to be in first line of renting the place. One last thing I want to talk about, the owner. Commissioner asked about who was the owner, Gorgi Yang. He's very into helping communities, and when we first found this land, he visited, he have a hair salon in the corner of that, one of those corners that he goes, or used to go, now he's not playing here anymore, but he used to go and visit that corner frequently. He knows the difficulties of that corner, and that was one of the reasons why he wanted to get that land, is to try to improve and help here, the country that he is getting his bread from, and not only Africa where he's from. So he also wants to do something, not only looking for profit, but to help in the community. That is one of his main goals, is to help, to give back to the community what he's getting from this country.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Luke here.
Yeah, I had a question for either the applicant or for Lindsay. Could you guys address the streets in the public right of way in terms of what possibilities there are for mitigating the heat island effect that one of the speakers talked about?
Lindsay, would you help me here? I didn't understand very well the question.
Sure.
Lindsay, if you could touch on, just while you're at this, I think touch on some of the conditions within the site plan review related both to the landscaping and to the blank wall conditions which were brought up by one of the testifiers.
Okay, so the project in terms of, so the C1 zoning district does not have a maximum impervious surface area. So the applicant has proposed 1,200 square feet of landscape area, 37 shrubs, and they did propose two trees, but the trees didn't meet the requirements of canopy trees. And I apologize, Commissioner Luke, keep here, there, I did not include the landscape plan in the presentation here. But, so they are meeting, you know, with the condition for the two canopy trees to ensure that the two trees that they provide meet that definition, they will be meeting the requirements in terms of landscaping. Let's see, and then as far as the condition, so the applicant, the building is built at a zero lot line bordering the property to the west, the surface parking lot for the Salvation Army. And within the last few years, the city has reduced the requirement for side yard setbacks for buildings that have commercial zoning to allow for the building of a consistent street wall. That is something that we like to encourage where it's possible, and so the applicant has proposed to build the first floor at a zero lot line. The building code does not allow openings on those walls that are built at a zero lot line. So there are blank walls on the west elevation that staff is recommending approval of, with the condition that the applicant provide a mural to mitigate that blank wall condition. While there are blank walls in terms of windows, there are openings, and there are windows at that south side on the corner to hopefully provide some eyes on the street, as well as windows on the residential floors above, including some rooftop amenity space that would look over that space as well to get those eyes on the street. And then I guess if IT were to scroll to the 10th slide, the condition that staff was recommending with regards to blank walls had to do with the north elevation, the fourth and fifth floors on the north elevation, each only have one window. So staff was recommending that those, that that big blank wall be mitigated on that floor by adding additional windows there.
So Lindsay, in the areas that you're recommending murals, are those potential areas where in the future a building might be built right up against it then?
Yeah, so that's the, that would be, the hope is that eventually there may be a building, you know, if the Salvation Army site was ever redeveloped, there could be something built there that would basically butt up to this building.
And then, so just to follow up on my first question just real quick then, so is the applicant open to adding additional canopy trees in the public right of way, just given the lock constraints and the additional CUP?
Yes, we are. We are very, very in accordance with adding trees as most as we can, making that area green and clean, that's our idea, and safe. And then I think I didn't mention, each of the 36 units, every single one of them have a balcony that hangs over the wall of the building. So we do have all of the units with balconies, with eyes on the street, and lots of lights around the building as well. Another thing about the wall on Salvation Army, two things about it is that, first of all, we have plans, after Lindsay proposed, we have plans to use to do a mural of a team of a basketball, because Gorgi is donating a basket, have a quarter into the parking lot of Salvation Army, to the Salvation Army kids to play, and therefore he's gonna then put, proposing a basketball team on this mural, signed it by him perhaps. And then also, we have been working with Gorgi and Salvation Army to redevelop Salvation Army's portion, because they are having issues special now with what we are going... with, uh, with what we are going through with coronavirus. They are having issues with, uh, space for storing food, for distributing food, for, uh, for shelter for people. And, uh, we are working with them, trying to develop a sort of a plan. We are sketching. We are just starting it, and we didn't propose anything to the city yet. But we might add on top of their building and perhaps on the parking lot, some sort of a gymnasium and more classrooms and more rooms and kitchens and space for them to be able to handle situations like we're going through now, uh, a little bit better.
Okay, cool. Well, thanks. I, I appreciate the balconies and the, the added trees especially. So thank you for that and follow up with staff in terms of what the changes in that regard are. Thanks.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. My question was also about the canopy trees. So in, in the staff recommendation, they're saying not less than two canopy trees. Is the applicant saying that they could accommodate more than that? And if so, can we, um, amend that to add a, a greater number?
Yeah, so we can, uh, we have space for more. So we, we only need to save a, a space for the snow piling. And, uh, we, we have more space in this landscaping area. We have over a thousand square feet of landscaping that we are proposing. We have some ceilings and then some space for perhaps, uh, reading or, or, or yoga or, or, um, even a barbecue, an outside sort of, um, of entertainment. But we do still have space for trees, and we are open to add trees, uh, and however many it fits perhaps, as the commissioners recommend or suggest.
Good. Thank you. Yeah, I think, uh, Lindsay, just for clarification, are, uh, the requirement within code, uh, which is, which is kind of what we can suggest at this point, is two, uh, canopy trees based on the, uh, code requirements?
Are we allowed to make a condition to have more than that?
Uh, we would have to tie it to, uh, we'd have to generate a rationale for, for that condition based on the applications.
That's correct, Commissioner Rockwell. Uh, with the proposed staff condition that application would be meeting their canopy tree requirement in site plan review.
Okay, very good. Uh, Commissioner Marwa.
Yeah, hi. I was just reading through the, the staff report, and I want to understand the affordability that we're talking about. Is it affordable because of this small unit size? Or is there any type of set aside for affordable housing in this project? Because calculating, it still looks like it's about $3 a square foot, so it's just not very affordable.
So, so, uh, what is, this amount, 16, uh, 13 to 16 are what we are planning to offer. The units that are non-affordable, perhaps, to me it seems like they are pretty cheap considering to the ones I saw around there. But we are required to have 10% of units to be affordable, and that is according to a formula that the city, uh, have to calculate the amount. And then we are going to be doing that to offer those 10% of units as, through the affordable, uh, program. The building does not, uh, is not involved in any funds or any, uh, special market, uh, special loans for affordability through the city or state or federal. So we are doing, uh, the percentage that is required by the city of Minneapolis to attend affordability on that.
Okay, and then I.
Just a quick, uh, I forgot to mention that, uh, why 16, 13 and 16 seems low to me? I didn't mention that every unit have the laundry in their unit. So all of the units have its own laundry. All of the units have its own balconies, and it's going to be a glass balcony. And, uh, also every unit have its, uh, its own, uh, heating and cooling system. So.
And are the 10% set aside that you're, that you're doing, are those going to be on the smaller end of the units?
They have to be a mix of them, so they can't be, I think there is also some requirement about that, but it is a percentage of each size.
Okay, good. And then my last question was just about if there is space, while we're talking about landscaping, about, um, added trash. If you have all the four additional retail spaces out there, you're going to have 36 units of people, bikers coming through, every, you know, all the people using the different spaces would just, I would just suggest thinking about, um, adding extra trash receptacles to this thing.
Right, yes. We, we have planned already, uh, and now we have, uh, also trash chute to the building. And we have, uh, enclosed area for the trash and a, and a room inside of the building where you can roll off and in the trash cans. So we've, we've thought and we've put thought into it, and then I think it looks pretty, looks pretty good.
Okay, and then on the, on the street side as well. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And, uh, Lindsay, uh, is there staff clarification here?
Yeah, so the project has 36 dwelling units. It's not subject to inclusionary housing. So, um, just in terms of affordability that is required by the city, there are, there's no affordability requirement from the city, nor is any affordability conditioned as part of this application presently.
Very good. Uh, nor do we have the apparent authority to do that, correct? Based on lack of, of, right, okay. Commissioners, are there any further questions for staff or for the applicant? Uh, or would somebody like to start us off with a motion here? Commissioner Asmiley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I move that, uh, we approve item 26, um, A, B, C, D, and E as recommended by staff.
We have a motion, Commissioner Asmiley, uh, to approve all applications, uh, A, B, C, D, and E with staff recommended conditions. Commissioner Dunnick.
Second.
A motion and a second. Commissioners, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini.
Aye.
Dunnick.
Aye.
Asmiley.
Aye.
Lukey here.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Swoosie.
Aye.
Nine Zero.
That motion carries. Uh, that concludes our business with item number 26. Kimberly, are there any updates from CPAD staff at this time?
First of all, just a huge thank you to all of you for your patience as we transitioned to virtual meetings. I think our first one was a success, so thank you, uh, to all of you and to our IT team. Looking forward, we may be putting the, um, just a moment.
I've managed to keep my own children downstairs at all times and hope that I get some credit for that.
Just part timing there, but, um, our next cycle will be for the April 27th meeting. We may also be trying to get that April 30th COW meeting back on your calendars. And if we're able to do that, I will coordinate that, um, and give you all updates via email between now and then.
Very good. Uh, well, and, you know, on behalf of the commissioners, uh, thank you so much to, to all the staff, CPAD staff, the clerk's office, uh, all of our IT folks, uh, who helped make this happen. This was smoother than some of the public, uh, in-person hearings we've had. So, um, thank you all. Uh, this was great and glad that this worked. With that, the meeting is adjourned.